Welcome, everybody, to the September 27, 2018 Radnor Board of Commissioners Community Development Meeting. Let's begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, once again, thank you, everybody, for coming out. As I am sure everyone's aware, this meeting is regarding the proposed Wawa development on the southeast corner of South Aberdeen and Lancaster Avenue. At the outset, in the back, there are three sets of documents there. One is our agenda, and it has our engineer's comments attached to it with regard to the plans. Next, there is a letter from St. Catherine of Siena. They had a meeting with Wawa to review some things and air their concerns. And then, lastly, are the preliminary land development plans. So, just so everyone knows where we're at, Wawa submitted a traffic scoping application to PennDOT back in the summer. It was copied to the township, so we had a community development meeting, much like tonight, back in the summer, just to get ahead of it. And before the plans were developed and filed, we wanted to make sure that the applicant, or not the applicant at that time, now the applicant, knew of our concerns, and we were hoping that they would work those concerns into the plans, which initiates the process. As expected, land development plans were filed. The review date, the 90-day review, when, as of right now, when we'll have to make a decision, is December 3. So, that's where we are. That may get extended, depending on how things go. It's not uncommon. And additionally, the Wawa was scheduled for Planning Commission on Monday evening. Due to a delay in PennDOT's response, they are off of the Monday night agenda for Planning Commission, and they'll be on for November 5, I believe it is. That's the November Planning Commission. So, that will be their first stop in front of the Planning Commission. I'd urge everybody with an interest in this plan to make sure you attend or watch the Planning Commission meeting on November 5. If that gets delayed, or they get moved off of that, we'll let you know, of course. So, with that being said, we have our plans, we have the review letters. What I'd like to do is I'm going to allow the applicant to give us a presentation, you know, highlight the major items there, and I would love it if you could highlight any changes in the plans since we received the scoping application and now. Then, I'd ask for staff's review of the plans, give us some insight into where they are at on those. Then, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody has anything to say, you can come up and say it. And then, lastly, after we've heard all that, since we are three-sevenths of the final decision, then I'd look to Lisa and Rich, if they have any comments. And certainly, if there's any questions during the presentation, we can have those answered as well. So, with that, Nick, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thanks. And we will give the township an extension of 30 days.
All right. Yeah, hold on here. Do you want the mic? There you go. Let me make sure it's on.
I'll put it in writing and send it to Steve.
Just make sure, if you can, just say that again, so the cameras pick it up.
The township, or the applicant, will give the township an extension for 30 additional days, or maybe a little bit more than 30 days, from the October meeting to the November meeting, an additional extension, and I'll send a letter confirming that to Steve Nercini. I had mentioned that in an email that I sent to Steve earlier, this morning, or late last night.
Okay.
I think everyone's familiar. I'm Nick Canelia. I represent the applicant on this matter. Okay, we do have it on. I think everyone's familiar with the site, the current site. This is the overview. What we're going to do here this evening is, as Luke mentioned, we presented a conceptual plan previously to the neighbors. This is now the file plans, the preliminary plans, there's many drawings attached. This evening, you'll hear about the proposed buffer, about the lighting plan, about the stormwater plan, and an overview, generally, of traffic. As has been said, the traffic impact study should be done probably within the next couple of days. There was additional comments from PennDOT and Township as well that were supplemented into this study. The Township staff, of course, will not have an opportunity to review that before a scheduled Planning Commission meeting in October, so that's really the main reason why that meeting was moved to November. So, we will give an overview on traffic, but, again, it won't be as much detail as it will be at a later date when the traffic impact study is completed. As you know, here's Aberdeen Avenue, here's Lancaster Avenue. What we have is the addition currently, we have two gas stations. The one gas station at the intersection of Aberdeen and Lancaster has an auto body repair shop located in, right here. And you have gas pumps located in this area. The adjacent property, both of which are owned by the Caracalians, or any of the Caracalians, this has the canopy and gas pumps, as well as a car wash, as you're well aware. The plan is to merge both of these lots, and, as you know, put a Wawa in with gas dispensaries. Currently, the existing conditions are, we have five curb cuts here. You hear how the plan are proposing three curb cuts. We have, there's six existing? Okay, and we're proposing three. The dispensers, I believe, we have 11 dispensers currently, and we're proposing six dispensers. We will make the buffer area in the rear of the property compliant with Township codes. Currently, there is no stormwater management at all on this site. We will comply with all Township regulations regarding stormwater management. Again, I noticed there were several mentioned by Roger in his review letter. All we've really had to do, I quickly looked at those letters today, we really haven't had a chance to digest them yet, but I know there's some comments about stormwater in Roger's letter. And also, the rear yard is actually being increased, is not confirming currently, with both the automobile repair shop and with the car wash. With that, I'll turn it over to the project engineer, and he'll give you an overview of what we're doing.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. Hi, my name is Eric Brits. Nick stole most of my thunder in going through the stats on the site, so he was pointing to the existing conditions plan. I'll put up the proposed conditions plan here today, what we're proposing. As Nick noted, we're proposing three access points, a reduction from 50% from six access points to three. A single building and a canopy. As it stands today, there's two buildings and two canopies, so that's a decent reduction there. Increase in the green area around the site by about 1,000 square feet. As Nick noted, there are 12 dispensers throughout the existing site. We're consolidating that down to six dispensers in one location. As it stands today, there's essentially four uses on the site. There's two gas stations, a store, and a car wash, and we're going down to essentially two uses, which is the fuel and the store itself. From a stormwater management standpoint, Nick said, as Nick noted, we're adding stormwater management to the site. We're proposing an underground basin in the southern southeast corner of the site, essentially. The code requires approximately 2,000 square feet, or, I'm sorry, cubic feet of storage. We're proposing almost 3,000 cubic feet of storage in that basin, and that's just, it's just considering the pipes that are in that basin. In reality, there's actually more storage of that in the stone. We're just not allowed by the code to consider that stone storage. So, it's, with the stones, 163% of that which is required for stormwater management. From a water and sewer burden standpoint, our use is going to dramatically decrease. The current use, mostly due to the car wash, is approximately, based on water bills, approximately 4,100 gallons per day. Also, based on water bills, a similar, Wawa's, we're proposing, or we're estimating about a 1,600 gallon per day usage. So, that would be a decrease, a great decrease, in the flow of about 2,500 gallons per day. Beyond that, as I indicated, as Nick pointed out, again, you've got three access points and a consolidated use with circulation that works specifically for this use. Parking surrounding the building, 55 stalls in total, a single trash enclosure. There's two trash enclosures out there today, a couple of air stations. I believe there are a couple of air stations there today, as well as vacuums that are being removed. I think there's five vacuums out there that have a 24-hour use that is being removed from the site. So, that's the site in a nutshell. Pete asked me to go over some of the changes from the original concept to what we're looking at today. What you see, in the original concept, we hadn't landscaped, God bless you, we hadn't landscaped that plan yet. So, this plan shows, we heard some of the comments from the last meeting, this plan shows a significant buffer in the backyard of the site. We moved the fence from the property line to the curb line, so therefore, the neighbors are really looking at the landscaping instead of a fence along this curb line here. We've also taken a look at the lighting, the lighting package and design. In consideration of the comments that were provided, we are providing full LED and full cutoff fixtures throughout the site. Today, if you look at the lights that are out there, you can actually kind of see the bulbs coming down, almost like the acorn fixtures that you have out in the street. So, in an effort to meet the IEA, ISNA standards, I'm sorry, IESNA standards, we are proposing full cutoff fixtures, which basically means there's no light emitting from 90 degrees or from that light up into the sky. And again, they also incorporate house side shields on them to help prevent view of the actual light fixture itself from underneath, or if you're away from the light looking up into it. I think that's about it. We do have, we are proposing a right-in, right-out at the closest, at Lancaster Avenue, point of access from, closest access from Aberdeen, along Lancaster Avenue. I believe that was, at one point, Luke proposed to be a full access point. And we also have a, this plan also does now propose a right-turn lane on Aberdeen Avenue, in early coordination with the traffic engineer. I believe that's about it.
Thank you.
I didn't bring this.
Just a couple of questions, if you don't mind. And the store, I think we said this last time, is one-story? Is that correct?
Yes.
One-story. And how tall is the canopy? Is it the same height as what's there now?
It's a sloped canopy, so the existing canopies today are about 16 and 1/2 feet tall. This proposed canopy ranges from 14 feet to 25 feet, closest to the building.
All right.
And that's really to allow for stormwater to flow off of that canopy.
I see that you have an elevation of the canopy right here.
We do.
Want to put that up? Is it now the right time? Are you saving it for later?
I can bring it up now.
That's a good call, Rich. Thank you.
So, this is an elevation of the canopy that we're looking at, the 25 feet at the highest point, closest to the building, and the 14 feet at the lowest point. Wawa is proposing the latest stone package that they were, it had been a special package for a number of years. It's proposed on this site as well.
So, those canopies, is that a Wawa standard? Do they have one manufacturer, so they're all that slope and that height? Or are they custom fabricated for each location?
I believe there's different canopies for, you know, they come in different shapes and sizes based on how the gasoline dispensers are lined up. So, in some cases, they're real narrow. You might only have a string of six in a six dispenser scenario such as this. You might have a string of six in a row, then you'd have a more narrow, and then a smaller canopy with it. But this is the standard canopy for this particular configuration of gas pumps.
All right, thank you. And I see we have pictures of the actual building, too, the actual store.
We do.
Can we put those up, please?
So, what you're looking at here is some elevations of the building. Again, the stone apron around the base of the building. The, I believe they use an Ephesus-type siding above the stone. The top of the building is, the peak is at 33 feet, but in general, the parapet, which is the main portion of the building, is at, close to 24 feet in height.
How does that compare, if you know, to the one at Bloomingdale and Lancaster?
I don't, I'm not familiar with that building.
Do you know? Now, in terms of height, I'm trying to get a visual, because this looks to me, this looks kind of, this looks a little big to me, so I'm trying to get a comparison. You know, I can drive by that one, and I can see. Yeah, we don't need it now, but I'd like to know in the near future.
So, Nick asked me to go through the lighting a little bit. So, as far as lighting goes, as exists today, there's 38 canopy lights. Did have another count. Well, there's 38 canopy lights, and we're proposing 18, so it's a decrease by 20 lights. Lighting package, let me see if I have that data with me. Bear with me a sec.
Are they the same size, lights, or are these bigger lights?
These are, it's a smaller fixture. They're ranging, the ones closest to the residential property are at 17, 17 and 1/2 feet. The lights that would be back along this property line here, two, three, and I believe there's a fourth one here, are all at 17 feet in height, 17 and 1/2 feet in height, this total height. The actual bottom of the fixture is about six inches lower, so it would be at 17 feet even. The rest of the lights that are throughout the site are at 20 and 1/2 feet, 20 feet to the bottom of the fixture. There is a decrease in the number of lights. I don't have that count in front of me, but I know it is a drastic decrease in lights, and it's a consolidated package. You don't have, I noticed at the existing two stores, you have two different type of light fixtures. Under the canopy, you have bulbs that are bulb fixtures that are hanging down under the base of the canopy, so you can kind of, it's the opposite of a full cutoff. There's light coming out in all directions, like an acorn-type of a light. These are recessed lights, essentially. So, they're, so it is, you don't have that, you're not looking at the fixture itself.
You have a light cut sheet?
We have one in the plan. I don't have it with me. Might have it in this set.
You've mentioned the light so many times, now I'd like to take a look, as if you have a picture of it. I don't see it in my, also, I mean, I have pretty good eyes, but that is microscopic text. Jen, did you make up these plans, or did they give these to you for us? From them? Could you guys, a little bit, just regular-sized plan would be good. Too small. I can't see it.
Commissioner, we'll make sure you have full-size hard copies.
All right.
Sure, the next meeting can be.
I can't find the light on these, at least. Yeah, it probably isn't electrical. Yeah, it's probably not. Okay, yeah.
So, this is the lighting plan. It doesn't have a cut sheet on it. This is our standard detail that really just details the height of the light. Let's just see if we have it on the landscape details by chance. And we don't.
And you said they're LED?
They are LED. So, we're proposing, looking at this plan, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 fixtures, pole-mounted fixtures surrounding the site. Again, they're all full cutoff fixtures, and they do have house side shields built into them.
And then, on the building?
On the building, on the building, you have some wall packs. They're also LED. They're also full cutoff fixtures. We have three along the north side, three along the south side, two on the back of the building, and then there are, there's under-canopy lights, recessed in the canopy lights. I believe there is 10 of those, five on either side of the vestibule.
And then, of course, all the lights under the canopy?
Yes.
At the dispenser?
18 total.
So, there'll be lights that side of the canopy, closest to the building, there's 25 feet high, and there's going to be light, so that will get into the neighbors from behind, won't it?
Where are we talking about?
On the right-hand side of the, island canopies. Nope. The right-hand, the island, right, nope, nope, back, back. The island canopy.
Right.
Right, there you go. That's the high side. That's 25 feet.
Yes. Well, we did, we did a study on the lighting. In this plan, it's hard to see, but there are, you'll see if you get ahold of the plans, look at them later. I know that 11-by-17s are hard to read. But there's a study done, a photometric study done, and that study that was done, not even considering the plantings that are out, that are proposed out here, doesn't include, doesn't consider the wall, I'm sorry, the fencing or the landscaping, and that study's showing that there's zero-foot candles of lighting hitting the neighbor's property. I would, I haven't studied the existing lighting out there today, but looking at the locations of some of those lights and the type of lights that they are, I would like to believe that there's more spill going onto the neighbor's property than we're proposing today. If you do go through these numbers, you'll see that there's zeros across the board at the property line.
Those calculations based on just the pole, or is it also, I'm talking about the canopy lighting?
They do consider the, it takes in consideration all the proposed lighting.
All right. Yeah, I mean, if you have questions?
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I'm saving.
We also, our traffic is, I don't want to hear from him first.
Yeah, please.
Why don't you, you have the landscape plan here, I believe?
I do, I do.
Why don't you go over that a little bit, so people know, the plantings and number of trees and things like that.
Sure. Okay, here's a black and white of the landscape plan. This is essentially what you saw in the rendering earlier, but it goes into the counts of the trees. What this is showing is you have 16 shade trees, five ornamental trees, and 31 evergreen trees. So, that gives you 52 trees, I believe, today.
May I ask a question? So, at our last meeting, my colleague had asked if you would consider a retaining wall or a berm or something along those lines. I'm not seeing that here. I see the trees, and I understand what the photometric study provided, but is that still an option, so that the residents would have that raised area, and now the trees are raised even higher?
Unfortunately, there's not enough room in the back to provide a berm. There's an existing three-to-one slope that goes down from the curb line that exists today down into the neighbor's property. So, we would...
Would a retaining wall work?
We are proposing a six-foot-high fence right at that curb line that would block the headlights as they come in. So, that was something that was added to the plan, into this plan. We, I believe, we originally had a fence considered at the property line, but after the last meeting and hearing the concerns and comments, we are putting in a solid six-foot-high fence along that property line, as well as the buffer trees that are required. A retaining wall, I'm not sure how it would work, given the small area that we have back there.
Might lose planning space.
To put a retaining wall in, they, a lot of times, they require tiebacks that go into the structure, so to be able to put that in, build the berm, and provide the landscaping, I think would be very difficult to do.
Thank you.
So, as I was saying, 52 trees proposed, we're removing six trees, so it's a net increase of 47 trees. We're also, in addition to that, we're putting in 75 shrubs, 75 evergreen shrubs, 18 deciduous shrubs, and 32 ground grasses, covers. So, we pretty much packed the site as much as we could with landscaping. You will see that there are areas in the front that don't have proposed trees. In this particular area, there's two existing trees along Lancaster Avenue. In between the two access points that we're working to maintain, we're providing two more. In the, near the intersection, we aren't proposing any trees. There is one tree that is proposed to remain. The reason being is there's an existing sanitary line, sanitary sewer line that crosses Lancaster Avenue and comes through our site and out to Aberdeen Avenue that we're proposing to So, to plant a tree on top of that sanitary line would not be a good idea. So, that's really, we don't really have much room to put many more trees. In this corner, we're maintaining the trees that exist today. If you look at an aerial of the site, you'll see there are trees that are along this property line. What we found is the majority of those trees are on the neighbor's property, and we're not doing any grading in that area. We don't intend on touching those trees. What we do hope, what we did find is that most of the slope today is really full of weeds and brush that's going to be cleared, cleaned up, and then planted to really enhance the existing trees that are just beyond the property line on the neighbor's property.
Eric, is the stormwater management plan in here? I know this will be subject to a lot more discussion and how we're modifications, but you can just quickly just go over the plan itself and what it is intended to do?
Sure. So, what we're proposing to do, as I noted, the existing site really just sheet runs off the site towards Aberdeen Avenue. The BP flows into the Sunoco site, and the Sunoco flows into Aberdeen, mostly just from sheet flow. What we're proposing to do is collect all the stormwater via inlets throughout the site, along the north side here, along the east side in these two inlets here, along the south side in these three inlets, four inlets, my apologies, on the east side in this particular inlet. What we're proposing to do is everything from the east side of the site and from the building will go to this underground basin. The basin is constructed of... The basin is constructed of stone on the bottom, arched culverts within the, within the basin itself. Knowing that it is a hotspot, township engineer brought that up in his letter, we're proposing to line this basin with a PVC liner, and it's what's considered a slow-release basin. There's a small orifice to let out the normal, the normal rains that we get on a daily basis, and then an overflow for the larger, the larger storms. You know, the hurricanes that come through, if you will. So that will, as I noted before, that'll, that'll increase, or it'll increase the stormwater management from that which exists today, which is non-existent, and decrease the flow coming off the site dramatically. I'm sorry. For a sanitary sewer, Pete brought up a good point. There's an existing sanitary sewer line today that, that appears based on some field information that we've received that feeds this entire block through our, through these two properties. Actually, one of them goes right underneath the BP building, continues through the site and out to Aberdeen Avenue. There's a second line, as I noted before, that comes across Lancaster Avenue and crosses through the property, along Lancaster Avenue, also out to Aberdeen. What we're proposing to do is obviously remove the BP building so you don't have a building on top of that sewer line. Continue that line through the site so we can continue and maintain the flow for the neighbors to the east of us, and work, and work it, rework it around, reconstruct it around the gas canopy into the existing sanitary sewer, sewer system in Aberdeen Avenue. Again, as part of that, in the analysis of the sewer flows, we're decreasing the sewer flows dramatically from that which exists today, mostly again because of the car wash, to, to what's proposed for the while. I believe, I believe I indicated it was about a 1,500-gallon-per-day decrease. About a 60% decrease from that which exists today. So that will be for both a sanitary sewer perspective and a water uses perspective. The DEP is currently reviewing the waiver proposed for the sanitary sewer that's, that's proposed for the site. They're in favor of it. There's a couple of details that they need to understand. I need to coordinate with the township engineer as far as, as, as the easements that follow this existing sanitary sewer line, which I'm sure the township will want and the applicant will be willing to provide.
Good evening. Again, my name is Matt Hammond. I'm with Traffic Plan and Design. I want to belabor a lot of what's been discussed so far, but I would do briefly just want to go over just the history of the, of the site and the plan as far as the traffic is concerned, and where we were and where we're at now, just give you a flavor, and then obviously discuss where we go from here. As was mentioned, the existing site contains two gasoline service stations. There are four access points that exist along Lancaster Avenue. One of the access points is almost at the current intersection with Aberdeen. There are also two existing access points on Aberdeen. All four of those drivers are what we would classify as full-access driveways. So one of the things that, that we look at, especially when we're redeveloping a site in, in, in an area like this, is how we can improve the site from a traffic perspective and more so from an access perspective. And as was mentioned, we have reduced the number of curb cuts on Lancaster Avenue from the four curb cuts that exist today to two curb cuts. A full-access driveway furthest away from Aberdeen at the property line, and then a right-in, right-out, pretty much in the area where the second driveway exists. Originally, on the scoping application that was submitted, we had proposed two full-access driveways on Lancaster Avenue, but getting or receiving feedback from both PennDOT and the township traffic engineer, we've since revised that to a right-in, right-out. In addition to that, since that time, we've had further discussions, further reviews, and one of the comments that was made by PennDOT as well as the township traffic engineer was the, the need for this right-in, right-out access, whether or not that access should be closed, or whether or not that access should be revised further to provide for a right-in. That is something, obviously, we're gonna continue to discuss with both PennDOT and the township traffic engineer. My opinion is, is that a right-in, right-out is appropriate in this location due to the fact that the store is what we classify as a front-back. What that means is there's entrances from both the front of the store and an entrance to the rear, and the only connection between both sides of the building is to the rear here. So in a sense, when you have the two access points, you've essentially split the site in half. You give vehicles the opportunity to enter the front if they want to get gas, want to come into the front of the store. You also give people the ability to come into the back and park and enter the store if they don't want to get into the front, get gas, and get into, there's a lot of activity that occurs in the front of the store here. But again, it's something that we will continue to discuss with the township traffic engineer as well as, as with PennDOT, being that this is a state roadway. We've also revised the access on Aberdeen from two access points to one full-access driveway. We tried to locate it as far back from Lancaster Avenue as possible. You can see from, from the sketch. And a comment that was, that was common through both the PennDOT, initial PennDOT review as well as the township review, was the provision of a right-turn lane northbound from Aberdeen onto Lancaster Avenue. And as you can see from this plan, we've accommodated for a right-turn lane and essentially provided for the longest right-turn lane that we could provide on Aberdeen Avenue. The original scoping application, again, was submitted mid, midsummer. We did receive a review back from PennDOT, I believe, in middle of July. There was a meeting held with the township similar to tonight's meeting back in July 17th. I was not present there. But then we did receive, at the end of July, a scoping review back from the township traffic engineer. There are a number of comments within that letter. It talked about additional traffic data to be provided in the study. There was five intersections added to what we had suggested. Those additional intersections, three of them were on Lancaster Avenue, essentially the signalized intersections that surrounded this proposed site, and then two additional intersections on Aberdeen, I'm sorry, on Midland at Aberdeen and Luella. In addition to that, being that this site is located in the area that, in proximity to two churches, in proximity to two schools, the township traffic engineer had also asked us to extend the time periods that we normally collect data for and also analyze those time periods. So what we've done is we've looked, as we would typically during the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour of traffic, we've extended the peak hour to encompass schools letting out, the middle school as well as St. Catherine's. We've also looked at the Saturday midday peak hour, and then because of the fact that there's churches in the area, we've also looked at Sunday and coordinated with St. Mary's and St. Catherine's to determine when the highest hours were, the highest service was on Sunday morning to collect that data as well. We've also, and I believe the township was copying on this, received a letter from St. Catherine's from Monsignor regarding a meeting that was held between ourselves and the Monsignor earlier in September. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss some of the concerns and issues that St. Catherine's currently experiences, more so, and I believe Monsignor's here in the audience, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the issues related more so to the school pickup and drop-offs, the time periods when the buses are coming through, the circulation patterns, and the like. Obviously, Monsignor also had some concerns with respect to the safety of the children and what could be done in order to enhance that, assuming this project moves forward. Similarly, to the fact that we will continue to work through this process with the township traffic engineer with PennDOT, we've also committed to the same thing with Monsignor to determine if there are any enhancements, as I would call them, that we can make to Aberdeen or Midland to help alleviate some of their concerns. A number of these issues that are currently being experienced are existing issues that have nothing to do with this project, but we do have the ability to work with the school and try to help provide some improvements to that area. Let's see. We are in the process of completing our traffic study. As Nick had mentioned in the onset of this presentation, we are in the process of finalizing that study. You should have that study completed and submitted sometime next week for the township traffic engineer staff and PennDOT to review. It will incorporate what I've discussed this evening in terms of the access points. It will incorporate the right-turn lane. We're also looking to do some pedestrian improvements to the intersection of Aberdeen and Lancaster Avenue. Elimination of some of the on-street parking on Aberdeen, which is likely a contributor for some of the issues that exist out there today. It's very narrow when there's people parked on the street, especially in the mornings when kids are being dropped off. The street doesn't lend itself to allow for on-street parking. So by virtue of the fact that we're adding the right-turn lane and cleaning this up, I think that will be a help along Aberdeen Avenue. But the traffic study will be completed. It will outline the recommendations that we're making. A lot of those recommendations are based on the comments that we received, not only from PennDOT, but from the township traffic engineer, and we'll continue to work hand-in-hand, as we move through this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all done, Nick? Thank you. I'll turn it over to our excellent staff. No, 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 staff, public, and then if we have any feedback based upon that, and also based upon questions, if, if the applicant has any feedback, you know, we'd welcome that as well. So I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'll, I'll let the, our consultants go through the review letters. There's some very salient points in there. Mrs. Kaminsky brought forth Aberdeen, no left out of there. I think that's very important. I think that's what the community's looking for in staff. And just so everybody knows, staff, meaning our consultants, staff, and staff traffic from the police department, we meet as a group and provide input to Mrs. Kaminsky's letter, and we also review this together as a group. So when you want to, when you meet with St. Catherine's, we'd like to be part of that and any other further, further meetings, because it is a, we represent our residents. So I think that Amy's comment of no left turn on Aberdeen is, is important. We're very concerned with cars, with allowing cars to go left, which would take you into the neighborhood, not saying that they would, but since you are removing the parking on Aberdeen and you are providing a right-hand turn lane, that's something that makes sense to us. As far as, and again, Mr. Phillips' letter is detailed based on the amount of stormwater information you've provided. I know you're gonna be providing more.
Steve, could I interrupt you? Could you say that again? No left onto Aberdeen westbound on Lancaster? Is that what you're saying?
No, no left onto Aberdeen from that exit where he's pointing right now. I think that was one of the biggest things from Amy's review letter and from staff that everybody was concerned with. On the stormwater management, again, Mr. Phillips' letter, very detailed. He hit some very powerful points. So I'd like to ask the applicant, we did ask, I did ask you last meeting, if you could go over and above, and I see that you have done so on your storage, but, and I, and I understand how you're working this and that you're, you're managing that part of the site, but the, the roof leaders from the canopy, right, they're gonna be going into our system, and I know that's all compensated for in your calculations, but again, as Mr. Phillips points out, this is a stormwater hotspot, and you do have additional storage. So I'd just like you to consider if you could try to manage some or all of the canopy runoff through those roof leaders. I know there's not a lot of room on the site, and I know you have your tanks there, but that might be something you can do in that one parking area where the one air machine is, just to ask you to look at that. That's our, until we get the traffic impact study and, you know, we meet again and Mrs. Kaminsky does her job and staff does, they would be my comments I'd like the applicant to consider.
Thanks, Steve. Amy?
I'm not sure what level of detail you want to go into. Are there, have you had a chance to look over the review letter? Are there any things that you'd like to discuss in detail? Some of these comments had already been put out there in this original sketch plan to give some guidance while they were putting together the preliminary plan and preparing the TIS, the traffic impact study. So is there anything in particular that you would like to discuss?
I, I think at the outset, if you can highlight the waivers that they're looking for and what your position is on those.
Okay. At this point, the waivers that they're looking for would be to allow the two accesses on Lancaster Avenue, there, there's less than 200 feet separation between the two accesses. We, we talked about just providing the right-in and eliminating potentially the right-out, understanding that that's also a PennDOT road. That's just something that, since it's in the ordinance, that it's remarked upon. The off-street loading space, they need a waiver because the width is a little over a foot less than what's required by our ordinance. The width of the driveway at the street line must be 35 feet with a minimum width of 20. The one on Lancaster Avenue will likely fall under PennDOT's jurisdiction as far as that go, but they may be required to get a waiver for that, and it will all depend on what the turning movements show for those driveway accesses. What's that?
I know he touched on it.
Yeah, I did not go over the traffic impact study. Did you want me to back up and go over? I know.
I just thought it'd be good.
I'm sorry.
Their traffic engineer mentioned some of the requirements that were put forth. I thought Amy could expand on them very specifically so the public knows what was, what was asked of them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So back to page two then. I apologize for that. I'm sorry. So one of the things that we had asked for is that the traffic counts be performed during, while local schools were in session, that they include pedestrian counts in all the counts that they take, that they ensure that they capture the morning arrival and afternoon dismissals for the schools. Usually, we require applicants to come in with a 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and, again, a 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM count, along with a midday count on Saturdays. But we also requested that they include a Sunday count, knowing that there are two churches that are nearby. We asked for an expansion of the study area. Mr. Hammond had agreed to those expansions. We also asked for 24-hour ADT volumes and speed data for both Lancaster Avenue and Aberdeen Avenue. That helps us to determine what the speeds are out there currently and also to determine what the peak hours of the roads are. In the original scoping application, there was a discussion about distribution and assignment of the projected trips. Being based on the existing traffic patterns, we asked that those be more heavily favor how those operations are occurring based on the current operation, since we predict that the same use will occur in the future. And we also asked that they look at the left-turn signal phasing at any of the signalized intersections to see how those operate. Are there any questions on that, or have I put you all to sleep yet?
No. Thank you, Amy.
Okay. So we went through several of the requested waivers, and Roger probably is better served to be discussing these, so he may be able to provide more detail. There's a requirement of a minimum of three feet of property in order to permit the normal rounding of the edge without encroaching on your abutting property. They're asking for a waiver from that. And then they're looking for the sidewalks and pedestrian paths to be laterally pitched at, they're required to have a quarter inch per foot for drainage. They're asking for a waiver from that requirement. Are there any questions on those waivers? Now, those are not, including the ones that our review showed may need a waiver.
So on that last one with the stormwater- So on that last one with the stormwater, essentially the stormwater runoff waiver with the sidewalks, would that, how would that impact that area? Would that have a major impact as far as you can tell?
Well, it's not a stormwater runoff waiver. It's a waiver from constructing the sidewalk at a pitch of quarter inch per foot. And I would, I would ask the people from Wawa to specifically ask or answer why they're asking for that waiver. I have an idea it's the area right around the entrance to the, to the building so that it's flatter for easy access, but I'm, that's my experience from Wawas and other townships that I represent.
Yeah, I mean, on its face, it seems de minimis, but I don't know if this is something that, taken in the aggregate, could have an issue there or create an issue there.
I can answer that question. It's, the quarter inch per foot is essentially 2.08% slope, which is the absolute maximum slope that is permitted by ADA for cross-slope of a sidewalk or an ADA path. So what we're asking for is, what we typically do is design the sidewalks to 1% slope, which for concrete is adequate for stormwater runoff and drainage. We actually design it, can actually be built to a half percent and still provide adequate drainage, and it gives the contractor some flexibility to be able to build it between 1 and 2%, meet the ADA requirements, and still provide the drainage that's necessary.
Thank you. All right. Amy, thank you. Is that, does that conclude your review? I don't have any other questions for you, so I've...
Okay. I do go into some other comments. I don't know if you want to go through them specifically. It's, the first one is talking about showing man-made features with 500 feet of the site. PennDOT and requiring that the township be invited and included on any meetings discussing the project. The next one is discussing the right-of-way. Right now, I think the important thing would be to get the minimum 60 feet, but there should be a discussion of whether or not 80 feet is appropriate or necessary. We do have another site that they did offer the half-width 40-foot, so I'm not sure where you're going to want to go with that. Number four is talking about clear-site triangles at the driveways and cleaning up those areas to eliminate any trees that were shown in those areas. The next comment is talking about the minimum curb rate. Do you want me to keep going, or?
If there's anything you think is significant, by all means highlight it. Otherwise, I mean, your letter is, you know, I read it over and it's pretty self-explanatory. You have a question? Yeah, sure.
So Amy, I just have a question about the right, the right turn in, right out only that's on Lancaster. How is it that, how can that be enforced? I mean, you know, I know that intersection right now, those, all those different curb cuts, you know, people are constantly trying to make lefts out of there into, you know, a line of traffic of people waiting to make a left onto Aberdeen on Lancaster, off of Lancaster. So how do you ensure that, you know, people are only going to make rights coming out of there?
Well, we would do a curbed island, pork chop island, something that would curve in the direction of where you want them to go to make sure that they're turning appropriately. So I do realize that there will be instances when there's less traffic volume, that somebody may come out and illegally make that turn left, but for the most part, people tend to obey those and follow the rules. So it can be very effective. I don't think they're as effective as a sign that prohibits that left turn just during certain periods of the day because it's easy enough to make that left turn. So I think that it can be done through good design.
And I noticed one other thing is you talked about looking at the left turn, the analysis, the left turn signal phasing analysis, so that you'll be looking at that for that entire intersection and all that?
Not just that intersection, but any of the intersections that they're studying in here. There's been discussions about whether or not there are needs for left turn arrows, how we could maybe help the traffic move more efficiently down the corridor. So that's something that we would be looking at. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to require Wawa to make those changes, but it is good to have that information and make good decisions about how you want to handle things in the future.
And just remind me, because I forget, is that one of the intersections that's included in the adaptive signaling and whatnot that we'll be doing with the Penn project, or no?
No.
That's not?
These are outside those.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Roger?
I think Steve and Amy pretty much covered all of my stuff. I'll reiterate that I will work with the applicant on the stormwater systems to ensure that we can get the maximum amount possible addressed through that system that they're going to construct.
Yeah, that, I mean, we can emphasize how much of an issue that is there. I mean, it's a major issue, so. And something else, you were mentioning improvements. Well, I'll get into that when we talk. Kevin?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a few comments. So we heard the height of the canopy at the highest is 25 feet, and there's going to be undermounded lights. I'd like to see an elevation from basically the canopy side down through the residential to see what a line of sight would be from the residential properties. Residential properties are sitting a little bit lower, and that canopy being elevated at a 25-foot height ultimately would be greater than that from the residential side. So I'd like to see how all that is going to play with the buffering ultimately at maybe a 5, 10, and 20-year progression so that we can see what ultimate effect, if any, that that buffering is going to have on the sightlines from the residence. Previously, we discussed the air machines along the residential property. I see that they are still there. I think it would be more appropriate to locate those along the Verizon building side. There's an island there. You'd probably locate both of those there. There's a tree shown there now. Take advantage of that and pull that stuff away from the residential properties. And finally, just some additional information on the time of trash pickup. The trash storage is, again, tucked back by the residential properties. I don't know if there's an opportunity to push that further into the site. At the very least, let's start looking at and considering pickup times for that trash. It's not going to be at the early hours in the morning or late at night, that we schedule that appropriately.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Doesn't make sense to me. All right. So we've heard from the applicant. We've heard from our staff. We certainly, at this point, would like to hear from the public. So if you have any comments on this, by all means, our general rule is five minutes. We ask that you try to keep it to that, and we'll move forward. Hi, Susan.
Hi there. Susan Stern, Midland Avenue. I will do my best on that. No, I just have, there's a lot here. So in no particular order, it's impossible to read the zoning table that's provided here. So, you know, I have no idea what the impervious or any of these setbacks at all are on the zoning table. So I'm going to put that to the side for a second and just ask a few questions that if you could follow up with the applicant, I'd appreciate it. It's not clear if the turning signal at Aberdeen is going to be a left straight or a left only. I assume you're intending it to be a left straight and then the right-hand turn only. The most troubling feature of this plan that I can see so far, and again, without being able to read the plan clearly, is that the single widest entry is on Aberdeen, and the applicant is asking for a waiver to have a driveway access that's greater than 35 feet. No one has bothered to mention how wide the driveway access that they're requesting a waiver for, how wide it is, nor have they particularly mentioned which one it is. Visually, on the plan, it looks to be the Aberdeen one. And between the wide driveway, and I'm pretty sure it's that one, but I could be wrong, and the pitch of the canopy, which I'll get back to in a minute, all I can infer from this is that they are intending to bring trucks in through the Aberdeen Avenue exit entrance, fuel up at diesel pumps toward the rear of that, of the property, again, I could be wrong, and then go out either the right-hand turn only to the west of the building or drive around the back of the building and go out to the east in the, in the entrance, the exit to the east of it. So to the extent that they're asking for a waiver for a driveway wider than 35 feet, 35 feet, they need a, they need a waiver for that. They need something wider than 35 feet. Please do not give them that waiver. It very much appears that what they're trying to do is bring trucks in through Aberdeen. I would say that I don't even think the gas station belongs on the corner, that the property should be flipped in such a way that the gas station is adjacent to the Verizon building, and that an attractive Wawa be put at the corner. I don't know how tall the one-story building is that they're intending. The elevations that I saw, the pictures look fairly unattractive, big swaths of gray or brown stucco. I would like to think that something more attractive could be built into the elevation. There are more attractive features on the Rite Aid, which I do want to get to the Rite Aid comment for a minute. Hopefully, we've gotten to a point in our town, when the Rite Aid was developed about 10 years ago, eight years ago, they didn't have to do any stormwater management. They got a waiver because disturbing the site, which had previously been a gas station or a fuel station or an auto station of some sort, in the past was going to create contamination. And I would sincerely hope that the township requires this applicant in redeveloping the property to do all the necessary and proper ground cleanup, no matter how contaminated, before we then, then require them to put in every single inch of stormwater management and then some. People lost their cars. People lost basements just a month ago on Midland Avenue. It's the hotspot. Yes, I would agree. I didn't hear how tall the building is proposed to be. That did concern me. With regard to the adjacent schools, two of them for sure, I would like to personally see a request that the applicant not sell tobacco, nor any nicotine or e-cigarette products in such close proximity to not one but two schools, and certainly a request that they never seek an alcohol license. There's no need so close to schools. Monsignor Browers mentions that the serious consideration be given to the architectural style for the facility in keeping with the architecture of downtown Wayne. I would also like to remind everyone that this property is adjacent to the South Wayne Historic District. Homeowners in South Wayne have spent considerable time, energy, money, and care to preserve the South Wayne historic features. We would hate to see our neighborhood ruined, not only by an increase in traffic, but with a disregard for the really historic nature of the South Wayne area. I am, I am troubled by the height of the canopy. I'm troubled by the pitch of it facing the neighbors. I'm troubled that there, you know, the slope, I don't know how long the canopy is. I would submit that we didn't need a 14-foot or an 11-foot slope to get water to drain off of a metal roof. I'm pretty sure it could be done with a whole lot less. The applicant indicated that that was the reason for it to go from 14 feet to 25 feet is to drain water off of it. Water will drain off of a metal roof pretty much with no pitch. So I don't think we need 25 feet. I did not hear the applicant say if they are, if they are intending to put in high-capacity fuel, diesel fuel tanks or not, or any diesel, diesel fuel tanks. That would be yet another indication to me of their intention to really have this become a diesel fueling station. And then the final question I have is really more a point of information. On the traffic study, I don't know what a WB62 design vehicle is or a WB50. I certainly hope that doesn't mean wheelbase of 62 feet or a wheelbase of 50 feet. Those are awfully large trucks to be coming down Aberdeen to turn into fuel in our neighborhood. So yeah, the follow-up on the waiver for the driveway, we need a lot more information about that. Thank you so much.
I think the building height you said was 25 feet at the parapet and 36 at the, or 30-some feet at that center.
Yeah, it's, looking at the elevation, it's 33 foot, four inches to the peak of the, of the roof and generally almost 24 feet to the parapet.
Mr. Clark, if I could?
Oh, sure. Absolutely, Roger.
Just to clear up Susan's question about the driveway, it is the driveway that's on the Aberdeen side, and it's the throat of the driveway is restricted by code to be 25 feet, and they're looking for 30 feet. It's not, the 35-foot measurement is at the street line, but then the actual driveway itself by code is 25 feet. So when you come off of Aberdeen and the curbing narrows down into the throat of the driveway coming onto the site, that by code is 25 feet. They're asking for 30 feet there.
Thank you. Okay. And that's, and just to triple-check on that, that's the intersection that we're talking about requesting that it be right turn only?
That's correct. That's the entrance.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment? If you can, just say your name and...
My name's Anthony DiStefano. I live in Ward One, and either ask the board or maybe the applicant does or doesn't know what the plans for the Wawa on Bloomingdale Avenue and Lancaster Avenue is. Do we know what that?
It said it was going to stay in operation.
That's going to stay in operation? So we were kind of laughing at the plan at work because we found section, yeah, we found section 10 of the existing land use and land use plan from the Radnor Township Comprehensive Plan Update, and there are some goals and objectives. And once we got through the goals and objectives, we came to page 10-21, and it says, "The Wayne Business District Gateway." It highlights the entrance to the Wayne on Lancaster Pike, both on the east Aberdeen and on west Bloomingdale. It is critical for a variety of reasons. Such gateways must accomplish several objectives, including automatic deceleration and traffic calming. In addition to...
Can you just make sure the mic's picking you up?
In addition to announcing one's arrival at a very special shopping experience. How this announcement can most effectively occur is not clear. Perhaps sculpture could be used, or a gateway developed which spans Lancaster Pike. Gateways which are much more conspicuous and visually appealing to both the pedestrian and the auto user must be incorporated into Wayne Plan. So they were saying at work we should call it WaWayne because you're going to have a Wawa at, at both gateways to the entrance. Kind of interesting. So then if we go back to the goals and objectives, objective two sticks out as the, to maintain and protect the many residential neighborhoods that make the township such a unique community, and six, work carefully to preserve the balance of land uses and ensure adequate buffering in the many critical interfaces between commercial, residential, and other different land uses. So I guess I kind of missed the boat on the traffic study, and the traffic engineers and advisory engineers mentioned the expansion. However, it mostly focuses on the site itself and the legality of turning in and out of Lancaster Avenue. But as we can all agree, Wawa is super popular, and everyone loves their Wawa coffee in the morning. In fact, I go to Wawa. If I lived on Bloomingdale, I'd be thumbs up for the plan, put the Super Wawa down the block from my house. But now we're going to have two Wawas, so maybe that would kind of break up your traffic flow. But from the traffic plan, it's more of the secondary and tertiary effects that are my biggest concerns with the Wawa. So I live on Aberdeen and St. Davids, and like Susan pointed out, I think the biggest issue with the traffic plan, I can't argue with the code the state puts out or how the township professional engineers interpret the code for turning on to Aberdeen Avenue or on the Lancaster Avenue, but think about how you actually get around, you know, Wayne, when you drive around Wayne. I certainly don't use Lancaster Avenue. What I'm going to do is I'm going to take a right on Schimone, and I'm going to go down St. Davids, and I'm going to go down there as fast as I could, and I'm going to go straight across Aberdeen, and take a left-hand turn into the Wawa. So I don't think what, you know, the traffic plan is considering the tertiary effects on how people are going to actually navigate through the residential neighborhoods to get to Wawa. I did notice the boxes were set up on the corner, but they're not simultaneously set up at the corner at Bloomingdale and Aberdeen, or Bloomingdale and Lancaster Avenue, because I would, if I was a contractor coming in and out of the main line, I would prefer to get my gas and Wawa sandwich at the same time rather than splitting that up, which is what we have now. You have the gas pumps at one end of town and your Wawa sandwich at the other, so it kind of disperses the traffic. I would certainly definitely not egress this location on Lancaster Avenue. I would take a left on Aberdeen, and I would use Midland Avenue to get in and out of it. It only makes sense. My street where I live... My street where I live, we don't even have sidewalks. In fact, the roads don't even seem wide enough that you can paint a yellow line on. And that's where all the traffic's going to go to get in and out of Wawa. As far as the aesthetics of the building and things like that, that's really not necessarily a concern, but it was a concern of whoever wrote the Radnor Township Comprehensive Plan. So I just personally, the other thing is there's three intersections on Lancaster Avenue and Wayne. You're going to move both pharmacies. You removed the Acme, and now we have all the takeout lunch places. Both pharmacies, all the gas pumps, and the Wawa, and all the takeout lunch in the one intersection. It just doesn't seem manageable, that one intersection. And as whoever, you know, spent the time to write this existing plan, it seemed to be a key intersection in the township going forward. That's all the comments I have on the matter. Thank you.
My name is Bob Stevens. I live in Pembroke North, just down the street from all this. Two things, I think. One, what we have on that corner now, the Sun Station has kept itself reasonably taken care of and doesn't present a terrible mess. The BP Station just looks like a disaster in my mind compared to what Wayne should look like. You have an opportunity to have somebody come who has a place that everybody in the world loves, and you got all the traffic problems you have with Wayne anyway. I can't see that this is going to cause a terrible, a terrible mess. I think you ought to be careful about what you're doing in terms of hanging in there with the codes you have. But they're entitled to the waivers that everybody else has had along the Pike, and I think you ought to rejoice that you got somebody coming to town who has a really fine-looking company based in southeast Pennsylvania.
My name's Bill LaHane. I live on Midland Avenue, 324. I'm one of the people who lost the car last week, last month, I mean. I have a comment about the way the matter was presented, and I understand that they're here making their points as best they can. But this is a very different use of this land proposed here. Because they wouldn't go to all this trouble if they weren't proposing something that's going to make much more use of this land. I heard how there are fewer driveways now, and there are going to be more trees, and there are going to be fewer lights. I'm skeptical of all of that. When I hear lights in this township, I think of the Villanova Stadium. And I remember the promises that were made about the Villanova Stadium lights. My daughter lives down there that way now, and they have blackout shades on all their windows because Villanova just doesn't turn off the lights, even though they made very clear, from what I understand, at the township meetings that they would never turn those lights on unless they're absolutely necessary. So I think that whatever conditions, and I just, as an aside, I found out about this project in the newspaper a couple weeks ago, and I got from my commissioner, I got the plans themselves. To me, this meeting shows that this development is a foregone conclusion. I don't, we're not here talking about whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. This is going to happen. I was sure of that when I read the plans and I read the comments from, excuse me, from the township people. And they were good comments, but they're not based on whether this is the right thing to do or not. They're based on the fact that it's going to happen. So if it's going to happen, I think that the commissioners have to be very careful about how they handle all the representations, all the comments, all the exceptions that they want from various requirements. And I just have a couple questions about the presentation itself. The way you described the building and the lighting, no one's going to be able to see a light unless they're standing on the property. Is that correct?
If you're going to answer, let's make sure we have a microphone.
Well, they said that there's zero-foot candles off property. So that means, that's what he's saying. You're saying if you're one foot off of this property line, there'll be zero light at ground level, right?
So what I explained, that it will be zero-foot candles on the residential property line. On, there is a little bit of light trespass going into both streets, into the street right-ofways, as well as to the east at the Verizon store. Nothing more than that which exists today. In fact, much less than, we believe, much less than that which exists today. We haven't done an existing lighting study as far as what, how that, how the lights work. But we do know that they're not full cutoff fixtures. They are very close to the property lines, close to the street. So we believe that we're improving an existing nonconformity from as far as spill goes. And again, the study does show that there is zero-foot candles at the residential property line without considering the wall that's proposed or the fencing and the landscaping. So once you add that, add the landscaping and the fencing, that'll only improve it even more.
How tall are the lights?
The lights that are closest to the residential properties are 17 and 1/2 feet. The other ones are 20 feet. Total height, 20 and 1/2 feet, 20 feet to the light source itself.
And where are they located?
Throughout the site. I can bring up the plan again.
Okay.
Basically around the perimeter and then some on the building.
Yeah, I mean, I assume this is going to be a very brightly lit property.
So they are. There's, they're around the site, and it's a very uniform design. The existing lights that were out there today, I think they were placed out in necessity of what was left and where they could place lights. I believe we have one of the finest lighting designers in the area, in our company, that did this design, and he's very passionate about getting a very safe and uniform design, meeting the IES standards. So it is, it's a nice uniform package. It's as minimal as you can be to meet those standards, the safety standards, and uniform as well to help minimize shadows.
And those lights will be on 24/7?
Yes.
Okay.
At night.
Okay. Yes, at night. Well, probably not. They'll probably be on 24/7. You just won't notice them until night time. So when you were doing your presentation, you were talking about how the vacuum pumps for, the vacuums for the existing gas station, the BP, are available 24/7.
That's my understanding.
Is the BP station up in 24/7?
I don't think it is.
No, it's not.
It's not.
Is the other gas station up in 24/7?
We used to open 24 stations all three corners of Sunoco. My name is Gary.
Can you hit on the microphone, please? I need you to speak in the microphone, please.
Yeah, answering the question, all three of them used to be 24 hours for many long, long time. And I used to have the both Sunoco stations, okay, cross street and that one. It did not make sense for us economically really open 24 hours, you know? So we closed it, and then BP stayed 24-hour for quite a while.
But it's not 24 hours now.
Now it's not.
So when we're comparing, we're comparing the uses that are across the street?
Yeah, yeah.
Not the one on the resident's side?
All right, let's, we, I, I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I have to keep it the one person on the mic at a time. It's going to get to be too much for people who are watching and for the recording, so... Yeah, please, I mean, I...
My point is that the presentation presented this as a, I characterize it as a less aggressive use of the land because of all the things that this one's not going to have. It's not going to have all those vacuum pumps. It's not going to have all the water coming from the car wash. And you described it as having two stores there now, and now there's only going to be one. I haven't been, I haven't seen anything available at the BP station except gas in the last 10 years, 15 years? Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong.
There's not a store.
There's no store there, okay. And there's not really, there's no body shop at the...
There's not a body, there's a repair shop.
Yeah, there's a repair shop.
You did say body shop.
Yeah.
He said it's not a body shop.
It's a repair shop. Yeah. So, I mean, I have nothing against Wawa as a company. I buy stuff there all the time. I buy gas there when it's available. I'll probably buy gas here because I'm going to get a chance. It's right around the corner from my house. But the way this is being presented as sort of, and I mean, the gentleman who spoke before, God love him, he's a fan of the Wawas. I know that when I drive by a Wawa out in the suburbs, it's very brightly lit. I am not looking at a piece of ground that I say, what could that possibly be? And I know, and I, and I don't understand, you must, you're in charge of the aesthetics of your building, obviously. I don't understand why the building is facing Aberdeen and not facing Lancaster Avenue. That surprises me, and I think, I just don't know the reason for that, but having heard the rest of the presentation, I'm a bit suspicious. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, Eric...
Brought up, I'm sorry, the neighbors and then...
Vince Boyd, hey. Not sure what ward I'm in. I think it's your 4? 2? All right, I'm in 2 then. I live on Shimonie next door, friend that's going to cut through my street to get to this Wawa. I'm coming in this late. Is this approved yet? I wasn't under the impression that...
No.
No, no, no. And I didn't really lay that out at the beginning of this one. They're going to go to planning in November. November's, the planning is going to give us a recommendation. It'll either be a straight recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions. We are free to do what we want at that point. So tonight is just to, again, we're just trying to get as much of a conversation going as possible to, if this is going to happen...
Okay.
...to have these things worked in there.
Okay.
Nothing's done, there's no vote tonight.
Okay.
Just a discussion.
Who covers the cost of the traffic study?
The applicant.
Just curious about conflict of interest. What interest does the township have in this? What benefit would the township have? Any economic tax, revenue?
Well, I mean, there's already, there's already business privilege tax being generated. There's already real estate taxes there. So would this increase it? I would imagine it would increase it because Wawa will...
Business privilege and mercantile tax is gross receipts. To the extent that this has greater gross receipts, there would be more tax benefit.
There would definitely be bigger gross receipts.
You would think, than those two, you would think there'd be two. And also, there should be more ad valorem or property tax because you would think that the value would go up, so there would be higher assessment, which would result in greater taxes.
Okay.
But for me personally, that's not something that comes into this. I, you know, we don't have a revenue problem at the township in general. We've had very low tax increases.
Okay.
Except for the rain tax, which...
All right, Rich, 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 let's stay on topic.
Is there any other interest that the township would have other than revenue? Any other benefit that we would get?
Permit fees, there's lump-sum permit fees and other, other fees for the bureaucracy.
So there's some financial benefits, but other than that, it doesn't seem as though, I mean, anyone would be really in love with this idea in the community.
You could argue there'd be greater expenses because the township would have more traffic, more upkeep, there could be greater infrastructure. You know, there could be greater expenses that go, but you have to, it might not be. That's questionable.
Rich, yeah, and it's public comment. I don't want to chew up your time with, you know, Rich, Rich will...
That's not, but I'm also asking, like, I don't, I'm trying to be educated here. It should be noted, by the way, like, okay, hypothetically, you're cutting down a car wash, so there could be less water use. That doesn't reduce water use overall, just shifts it to another car wash, by the way. If I don't get my car washed at that place, I'm driving to Pete's down the street, so it's not, there's no water reduction happening. If anything, it's increasing traffic to the other side of Wayne, which I live a decent life of convenience. Like, I get angry when I have to drive to Paoli, so, and by the way, I live in Wayne because, and everybody lives in Wayne because it is Wayne. It's not Paoli, no offense to Paoli.
I understand, I'm two blocks away, so I hear you.
Yeah, you're in St. Davids, right? Yeah.
Ground, almost to ground zero, not like some of the neighbors here, but close.
It has, I mean, the lighting's been mentioned, the traffic's been mentioned, the ancillary traffic that this creates on Midland, Shimonie, et cetera, has been mentioned. Safety, I haven't heard, or there hasn't been much talk on the commercialization of Wayne and the gentrification, I don't know if that's the right word, and what effect this might have on other businesses like Capri or something, because kids maybe buy smoothies or whatever at Wawa, and it hurts other local businesses. Overall, it just seems, I mean, look, I enjoy Wawa just like everybody else. I just don't want another one in the town and don't want one at this location. When is the vote on this, by the way?
We don't know yet.
We just said it'd be, we said in November, and then we said it'd have 30 days, or was that 30 days to November?
So December's the 90-day mark, and we're already on a 30-day extension. So it won't be till next year.
Okay. And the seven, well, year three of the seven, and if it gets four votes, then this happens, right? Majority rolls? Okay. And it's public who votes yes or no?
Absolutely.
On the website, where do I find that information?
Here. Website everywhere.
Website everywhere.
In the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, you won't find out until...
I've never watched a meeting. This is my first meeting that I've been or watched, so I'm new to this.
Well, thank you for, thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.
And we'll definitely, so what happens prior to the meetings when this would come up for a vote? You know, we put out, the agendas go out the Wednesday prior to our Monday meetings. Certainly, the majority of the commissioners send out information, you know, when certain votes are coming up. So, you know, this is definitely a big one, and we'll, you know, people will, people will be made aware.
Has anyone in any of these meetings or any of this community, or have you heard from any of your constituents, anyone that said, "This is phenomenal. I love this. I can't wait for this place to open. This is great." Like, people are actually wanting this?
Yes.
There are people who...
The first one I heard was at the microphone.
We got an email.
I've gotten some emails and whatnot. There is some support out there.
I haven't, I haven't gotten any.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Melinda DiStefano. I am Ward One. Jack Larkin is our commissioner, and...
Are you related to the other DiStefano that's right there?
Yes, I am.
Are you related to Jen DiStefano?
I am not. She's DE and I'm DI. But I actually started a petition about a week and a half ago. We have over 500 signatures right now on change.org, and a lot of the residents are voicing their opinions and their concerns with this, with the proposed development. I actually heard that this was circulating around high school. We hadn't even heard anything. I live on St. Davids Ave and Aberdeen Terrace, and I did not receive anything in the mail regarding this proposal. And when I reached out to Jack Larkin, I've had a few email conversations, and where this gentleman brought up is this going to pass or do we have a vote in it? From what Jack tells me in emails that he writes, he wants to temper the public's expectations, stating that Pennsylvania law requires the Board of Commissioners to approve any land development application that meets the minimum requirements of the land development and zoning ordinances. And he says, "A plan that does not request waivers is called a 'by right' plan because it can be built by the developer by right." I have a problem with by right. I don't think anyone should be able to do anything by right because we all have to follow rules. I mean, we just got a shed built and an 8-by-12 shed, and I think my husband had to submit almost 107 pages.
But this one's not by right, anyway. They're going to be requesting waivers, so that won't be in that class.
Yes, but he has said that you, we are going to have a lot of limitations in having a voice on whether or not it's going to allow it to pass. I mean, do we, do we even have, I mean, we're here tonight, but I feel...
Jack is a developer's lawyer, so he would, that's kind of his position.
Well, yeah.
I think, so I think what Commissioner Clark had said in the beginning is part of the reason for this meeting, the meeting prior, is to hear from the residents and to talk with and work with the applicants. I mean, I have a whole list of things that I have to say with regards to this once public comment is over. You know, as Commissioner Booker said, if they have a lot of waivers, there are things that we can do about that. But, you know, part of all of that is to have these conversations and to see where we can reach compromise, make changes, if there is a plan that is going to move forward. So that's what these conversations are. Nothing is... Nothing is being voted on, as Commissioner Clark said, tonight. There's still a lot of work to be done, I believe.
And do you have a lot of your residents reaching out to you and your different wards expressing their concerns or...
I do, yes.
You do? So, just because there's not a presence here does not mean that you're not receiving it on your end through emails, or, okay.
I'd say that's accurate.
Okay.
The people who want to have the biggest impact, the best way to do that is have the most people at the meeting. That's always the case.
Right. Well, when there's only 10, I get a little scared that it's already going to happen, and, you know.
Well, I think it's legitimate, and the issue, this gentleman over here mentioned from Midland, this is already a done deal.
I feel like it.
I think that there's a great concern, but the fact of it is, it takes four votes, and I haven't, I don't know what the votes are right now, but my guess is it's more likely than not than it is a done deal. But I don't know, we don't know where the votes are. I don't know what the votes are, so we'll have to see. I don't, I haven't talked...
Now, how long are average traffic studies conducted for a site proposal for anything?
A few days.
Few days.
Amy, can you, and then we're getting up to the five-minute mark.
Yeah, I'm just curious what you mean by how long...
So, if they started in the summertime, kids aren't back in school?
They did not start in the summertime.
Okay, so they started when the school started?
Yes.
Okay, now, does it go through lunch break?
They did not include lunch break. They included an extended morning period for when the students are coming and arriving at school.
Can that be requested to add?
Can I finish?
Sure.
And then they came back in and did a afternoon, which was extended to pick up the PM peak hour, which is the greatest peak hour of the roadways. And then they also did the church hours on Sunday. They contacted both the churches to make sure that they captured both of the peak services at both of those facilities. And they also did a mid-peak on Saturday, which typically is greater than the PM peak hour.
Okay, but no mid-peak during Monday through Friday?
No midday, no midday, correct.
For what reason?
Because that's not where the peak hour of the traffic is, and even though that may be, what you find at a Wawa site is you have some peaks that are occurring in the morning, sometime during the lunch hour, and in the evening, but the peak hours of the roadways don't coincide during that midday peak. They're not as extensive as they are during the morning, or the afternoon, or the Saturdays.
I think they are during that time, especially with all of the businesses across the street. So, is there any proposal that something could be done mid-peak, Monday through Friday, to actually see how much traffic is going to be generated in that area? I don't know if you frequent that area, but I do, and it takes me quite a long time to get to my neighborhood during a peak hour. So, that would be just a recommendation for me, if we could extend the study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris, you're already 200 blocks from Midland. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to ask some questions. So, I live in Wayne because I can walk around. Wayne is very much a walk-to-town, a walk-around-town. So, when we talk about the traffic study, which is probably most of a concern I have, you also have to measure pedestrian traffic. It's not only about autos, it's about people, and how we're going to manage all the people that are walking around Wayne during the day. I didn't hear anybody say anything about rush hour as a peak.
Yes, there, we are doing, there's an evening peak hour also. So, it's extended because we wanted to capture the student release beginning at around 2:30, so I assume that the hours probably ran 2:30 until, 2 o'clock, 2 o'clock until 6 o'clock. I haven't seen this study, and we did require them to gather pedestrian counts also.
Okay. All right, so rush hour would be like 5 to 7 in Wayne?
Typically, 4 to 6 is what we asked for, but they've extended it because of the school in the area.
So, just an observation...
Yeah, just make sure you're speaking into the microphones.
Just an observation, the traffic is most heavy getting out of Wayne around 4:30 to 6:00. So, that's a very critical time.
Perfect, we've captured that then.
You're capturing that, and I didn't hear that earlier, so I must have missed that. My other comment is more of an observation, it's about traffic flow, and I'm not a traffic expert, it's just an observation. You've got this right in, right out in the middle entrance here. A lot of the traffic that's coming to get gas at Wawa, which a lot of people do because prices and so forth, are going to be looking for an entrance, and they're not going to be able to get in the middle entrance there, because it's right in, right out only. So, they're going to be forced to go down to Aberdeen and make a left to enter where the church is. You're creating more traffic flow coming into the property by having it cut out that way. I would suggest you rethink that, just as an observation, right in, right out. People are going to skip the first entrance because there's not any of the pumps. So, they're going to go to the next entrance, not going to be able to turn in, and they're going to learn as a habit to go on Aberdeen, and you're going to force more traffic at that light. It's bad enough as it is right now.
Quick question, there's a left turn onto Aberdeen, there's no left arrow, right? So, anybody who's going to do that, as the gentleman suggests, will wait until it gets an opening, right?
Yes.
So, that could, that also will back people up because they'll be waiting.
My point exactly.
I think that they'd be more likely to come in on that right entrance, or continue to the next entrance and swing back around the building to come into the pumps. I understand what you're saying, but to come south, you're saying that they would head...
Westbound Lancaster traffic.
Westbound.
Westbound Lancaster traffic, skipping the first entrance because there's not any of the pumps, can't get in the next one because it's right in, right out, go to Aberdeen, sit at the light, back up traffic westbound before they can turn in and make the turn-in from the 30-foot wide entrance at Aberdeen.
I, I mean, we can't predict everything that everybody's going to do. We will be looking at how this operates presently. The other thing that, maybe you would get that occasionally when a new person comes to the site, but once you come to the site one time and make that mistake and miss that entrance, then you're probably not going to make that same mistake twice, I would imagine.
What you're going to end up doing is cutting in on Pembroke or St. Davids and coming down Midland, which is where I live. So, you're forcing people's behaviors to take the inside roads, to come around and come in from Midland onto Aberdeen, and come in from the pumps from that direction. Is this a bad lay, I'm sorry, but my observation is, it's a bad layout. The right in, right out's not going to work. You have to give as much access to the pumps as you can from Lancaster Avenue.
Well, if you give too much uncontrolled access, then you have a problem with conflicts on-site and with entering and exiting the site. By separating those movements and having the right in and right out, what you do is you allow those lefts to go without any conflict out of that main entrance, and you want to move that further away from the intersection so that you get available gaps from the signal. If you make that left closer to that intersection, you can have right turns from northbound Aberdeen conflicting, and you won't even see them until you're making that left in there. So, there's a lot of reasons why this is preferred, and this is actually what Penda has dictated for this site.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not an expert on this, but are we going to pump diesel at this station? We are. Does the canopy over the pumps, the 25-foot or 24-foot, is that designed to allow for truck access? Is that why it's so tall?
That's one of the things I wanted to respond to. I believe that's more of an architectural feature, or perhaps someone can address that?
It is an architectural feature. It does allow for the trucks to be able to pass underneath the corners as it's circumnavigating the parking lot.
Okay.
Does it also match the building itself?
The delivery trucks, not trucks coming in. These are not high-volume diesel, to go back to your last question. They're, it's a slower diesel. It's not really set up for, my understanding and sitting in a lot of the hearings for Wawa throughout the years, it's not high-volume. So, it would take a very, very long time to fuel a truck at these type of facilities.
So, you're saying that you're not going to, 55-gallon saddlebags on a tractor is not what this is designed for. It's designed for smaller diesel trucks and passenger vehicles and boats.
However, it can fill the larger trucks, it just takes longer.
Do, take longer, right.
It would take such a long time to fill a larger truck with those saddlebags. Those trucks do not come to these sites. We're talking 20 minutes, 30 minutes. These trucks are trying to get from one location to the next. They're not spending 30 minutes trying to fill up their tanks with diesel fuel on a site that, you know, shouldn't actually be accommodating them. That's been our experience in the past. Obviously, there are other locations, other truck stops that allow for high-volume diesel, but these are not the locations where you're going to see a tractor-trailer fueling. The one other thing, and I don't want to take up your time, and I apologize, hopefully they stop the clock, but what I wanted to clarify in terms of the canopy is, I know some people have an issue with the height, the 25 feet, going from 14 to 25 feet, but the canopy is purposely done that way, it's designed that way. So, what happens is an architectural feature. So, as the canopy comes from its lowest point in the front of the canopy to its highest point, it slopes up towards the building. So, what happens is it actually looks like it blends into the roof. That's been purposely done. So, if the canopy, no, no, so, yeah, I'll show that, but the canopy is meant to go like this. So, it goes from the 14 feet to the 25 feet here, because it slopes up, so it looks like it blends in with the roof when you look straight at it. So, there was a concern raised about the canopy facing the residences. This is the way the canopy goes. Imagine this were the store, the front of the store here. This is where you entered. This is the way the canopy is designed, so again, it looks like it blends into the roofline. It's not meant to be facing the residence. If you were sitting in the residence behind it to the south, this is what you would see this side.
Right, it faces out, it faces out onto Aberdeen.
Now...
No, 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 the lowest, this is Aberdeen here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, okay.
That's what I mean.
So, on this drawing, I would ask that you show the front elevation of the building on that top section view right there, because you're showing trees behind it. That's not what you're going to see. That's not depicting what you're describing.
Sure, we would, sure, we can absolutely revise this to show the buildings here so that everyone's clear.
You should, and then you should put a gap between that, because it's hard, between those two, the section right there, so that you can tell it's two different sides.
Absolutely.
That's it, that's all I had. I just wanted to close with, you know, my biggest concern is safety of the community, traffic flow, pedestrian flow, making sure everybody's safe, and questioning why certain elements are put into the plan, such as the roof pitch, diesel fuel, driveway entrance width, and then the traffic flow in and out of that right only. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. I'm Neula Carpenter. I live on St. Davids Avenue, and I'm very concerned about the traffic at that intersection of Aberdeen and Lancaster, because we use that road a lot to access St. Davids, and it's, I mean, sometimes you have to wait to, through two or three lights to get there the way the traffic...
Because you're making a left, or right.
No, even if you want to go straight across.
Yeah, sometimes you could stop.
Because other people are making lefts. People are crossing, walking across, so then the cars can't turn. There's only room for one car, you know, so if a car's turning left, a car's turning right, you know, sometimes you wait a long time because of all the other people coming the other way on it. It gets to be a real mess, especially when it's the peak times, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you get there, you think, oh, wrong time to be here. So, I really worry about that. That's my main, one concern. And the other is the whole aesthetics. I mean, I do worry about having this Wawa, I mean, I know what they look like, we've all seen them, and we buy gas at them all the time, but they're not beautiful, and, you know, they are brightly lit, they're glitzy, they're not, they don't say Wayne to me, and I worry about having this as, you know, the entranceway. So, I think everything should be done to make the building aesthetic. I don't like the 20-foot-high canopy, you know, I've seen those canopies, they're big, they're ugly, they're very much in your face. So, I really worry, worry about those two factors. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hello, Elizabeth.
Hi, Elizabeth Stahl. I live on Windermere Avenue, and I just have a question. Is the property, can you only build a gas station on this property because it already has a gas station on it? Are they, are we limited to what can be built there?
It's commercial zone.
Yeah, it's a commercial zone right now, so it could be really anything, unless we rezoned it, of course.
Okay. So, the other question or statement I have is, Wayne is about as small a town you can get outside of a big city, and that's one reason why we love it. We live in a house that was built in the 1800s, and, you know, we love the aesthetic of South Wayne. And I know that we've lost two older homes on Route 30 just in the last couple of years. One was just torn down, and, you know, I think it takes away from the small-town feel of Wayne. So, I was just wondering how much say does the committee have on the aesthetics of the building? Wawa are a cookie cutter, and is there, how much say do you actually have in saying, no, this, this doesn't fit the makeup of our town?
Well, we can, I mean, that's accomplished one of two ways, either working with the applicant on that, and if they don't want to, I mean, we can, if there's four votes to deny it, it's denied, and then they could seek remedies with the county court, and then it's out of our hands. So, you know, we can work together on it, or we could deny it and use that as a way to do it, to be completely honest. So, but the hope would be that there would be collaboration there if this is going to happen.
I would answer the question, in general, we have relatively little say on the aesthetics of that building. The only way that we can affect the aesthetics so that it would have a 1880s, 1890s, or some feel of a country town, would be to get the applicant to agree to do that at their expense. And the only way we could do that is if there were issues that we were working, working through. But in general, probably very little, but Wawa seems to be, at least Mr. Karakalian has been very, and Wawa people have been very receptive, and they seem to be taking comments and really responding.
So, my, I don't know where we are in the process, you know, I got wind of this this summer, so I apologize if I'm not current in all my questions. So, the, has any of that been discussed with Wawa? Like, can we make this look like it could fit in our community? Because if it has, I don't see any of it here.
Yeah, so that, so this is only the second meeting we've had on this. This is actually the first time we've seen a rendering. They didn't have a rendering the last time when we met back in July, and those are some of the things that I think we'd like to speak about. You know, I've spoken to other people around some of the work you guys did on the one in media, and how that was, I think, made to look more aesthetically pleasing and fit in with that community. So, I think those are, again, those are the conversations that a meeting like this, where we can have, I think they, you know, this is the beginning, and certainly hearing from the residents, I think that the applicants hear what people are saying, so we can hopefully have those conversations and move forward with something that, I have to agree, would be a little more aesthetically pleasing for Wayne.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, just if I could add to the aesthetics, as a new commercial project, this will be in front of our design review board at some point, so that will be an opportunity for the public and the commissioners to weigh in on that, as well as, you know, depending on how that goes, the commissioners can, you know, oppose that action and go from there as well.
Hi, I was a little late, so I'm sorry if I ask anything that's already been really covered. Generally, I really liked the idea of a Wawa at this location instead of the two gas stations that are there. I like Wawa, use it quite a lot, and I travel through this intersection quite a lot, so it'd be very convenient for me personally. And however, I'm hearing some of the immediate residents expressing concerns about nuisance and stress and quality of life issues, and especially in light of what happened to my neighbors and the Villanova project. I really wanted to stand up and say, I think it's super important when we have projects like this, that the stakeholders, especially the most immediate stakeholders who have to live with these things 24/7, that their concerns are fully heard and incorporated into it, especially light pollution. I'm thinking that, given what has been ongoing for a little more than a decade with the Villanova stadium lights, it would be lovely if we take a look comprehensively in the township about what our regulations surrounding light are, and maybe think about revisiting that, because I know we have a lighting ordinance, but it's been inadequate to really take care of us. And I hope it is adequate to take care of the neighborhood of this. to take care of the neighborhood of this. I have heard some of them talking about light. The other thing I want to comment, it's on one of the other drawings. I don't know what the technical term is for this kind of a driveway, you know, right in, right out, but more specifically, you can either have a sidewalk that is crossed by a driveway, or you can have a driveway that has a crosswalk in it. There's probably a technical term for that. I do not know what it is, but my observation of the ones in Villanova is that it seems to promote speed ramp behavior and people stopping right in the middle of the crosswalk. And I don't know if there's any science behind that, but that would be my concern for the pedestrian traffic, that, you know, there's a lot of concern about the schoolchildren, et cetera. And maybe someone who has a little more of the research about those as opposed to having a normal sidewalk that is crossed by a driveway can address that concern. But I would be concerned for them that they'd see more of that zip in, zip out, which yes, that moves traffic faster, but it also disrespects pedestrian egress. So, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank you for your service and your time tonight, because I know that, and then for folks in the township, thanks for the time that you spend with us. We, I do appreciate that. Mike McManus, I'm at 301 Midland. Actually, I have two questions for clarification. The first has to do with the back door of the proposed Wawa, of whether that would be locked. Cause we were talking about the traffic flow and the folks that would be using, let's say that's the Verizon side. Would that remain open 24 hours? If not, if it's closed, is that gonna force the traffic again over onto Aberdeen? And just so, some thought process there, would it make more sense for that to be open 24 hours as you're looking at that flow? My second was a comment that was made was that there was no parking going to be happening on South Aberdeen. Now, I think that might have been a conditional, we were talking about the, the right turn lane at the time, but I just wanted to make sure, are we talking about there's not gonna be any parking on South Aberdeen, and we're gonna change that as in?
I think that's controlled by the township, actually.
Well, what, what I.
Or we were just talking about where the cutout is.
Well, Mike, what I think they meant was, as you can see, there's gonna be a bump out there.
Yes.
So I, I think that is designed to keep the cars off of there. Now, as for right below it, you know, I, I know, I know how that edge of your yard gets torn up. So if that's, if that's part of your concern, then that's something we can look at with the State of Traffic Committee.
Well, as, as much as anything, it just pushes the traffic around the corner. So if, if we do, if the answer was we're not going to have any parking on South Aberdeen to Midland, that just pushes all the traffic onto Midland for more parking issues. So it doesn't necessarily solve that. I was just trying to get clarification for what the expectation of the comment was. So I.
As far as my comment, it was just directly related to along the frontage of the Wawa. I wouldn't opine on anything beyond that unless I was asked to.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
So there would be parking on the St. Catherine's side of Aberdeen?
No.
No, no parking, no parking either side along the Wawa frontage, is what we're saying.
All's I'm aware of is that there was parking along the curb just west of the Wawa on Aberdeen. So on that curb line that's shared with the Wawa proposed site. So we had recommended eliminating the parking there, because I had concerns with trucks coming in and parking there to run into the business and disrupting traffic on Aberdeen.
So the proposed right-hand turn lane is where the parking used to be, more or less?
And I, I don't know where parking is allowed on Aberdeen, except for I could tell that it was on that curb line. So that was all we recommended.
Well, I, I can tell you it takes, I mean, I'm sure you've seen it. It takes place all along the right side, the east side of Aberdeen there. I mean, it's not uncommon to be blocked behind it while you're trying to get through it, so it happens. So if that were to get cleaned up as part of this, I think that would be a benefit if it does. So before I start, is there any, is there any further public comment? Seeing none? All right. So I'm, I, I voiced some concerns last time at, at our meeting in the summer, and my concerns remain largely unchanged, and they're not surprising. I'm two blocks from there. My, my, my kids, when they're in sixth grade, will be walking to middle school every day, I'm sure. They already go to prep at St. Catherine's. We go to church there, so we're walking around there all the time. So the thought of this store being in there, while I like Wawa, and while I think it will be more aesthetically pleasing, it's also going to drive a lot more traffic, in, in my opinion. And I think that's the same opinion that most people have. People fill up gas there, as I've told people. I go to the Sunoco all the time. I don't think I've ever been in the store. I don't think I've ever gotten anything from the BP. So, and I think most people would agree. So now we're gonna have a store in there that in and of itself is going to drive traffic, and then we're going to have cheaper gas, which people are gonna be looking for as well. So that's an issue. And I, I, if, if this plan's going to go through, that might be something that just is, is, is part of it, unfortunately. But that is a major concern of mine for myself and my neighbors and all the children and people that walk around there. The 24-hour operation, I, I do not love that either. I know that that's an economic concern for Wawa. I believe that is something we can address as part of our approval. I'm not gonna get into that yet, but I know that that is something I'm concerned about, especially for the neighbors who are right behind the Wawa, to have continuous traffic in and out of there. Obviously, it will slow down at night, but right now, that's a dark site at night. I mean, there's not much going on there. So that's going to change if this goes in, and that's, that's very concerning for me. The trucks, that's well said. I completely agree. I don't want to see, we do not want to see trucks coming off the highway and making that a destination to, to, to fill up and, and possibly make their way through our neighborhoods. And certainly in terms of the driveway on South Aberdeen there, if that is going to stay, we have to look at the, the width of it, of course, as well. I think Susan's point is well made. I do, if this is going to happen, obviously, I want to see as much traffic shot out onto Lancaster Ave as possible. So I would certainly be supportive of a no left-hand turn there to try to keep that out of our neighborhoods as much as possible. So those are my feelings on it. I always try to keep an open mind on anything that comes in. So I'm continuing to listen and evaluate and spread information as much as I can. But I am concerned about how much more traffic this is gonna drive. I really am. So.
Okay. So I won't belabor the points. There's nothing that Luke just mentioned that I disagree with. So, you know, definitely concerns about the traffic, that definitely the 24-hour operation. So one of the things that, that I'm concerned about is definitely the aesthetics of the building. That is, you know, it's a Wawa, but it's not in keeping with, I think, the, the look of Wayne. The gentleman who read what, you know, we want, have, want to consider around a Wayne gateway, or, you know, at least keeping that small-town feel, this building doesn't do it at all. I realize it's kind of the, I think, the traditional Wawa package. Maybe this is what you are presenting, and, and hopefully there is the opportunity for us to have the discussions where we can turn it into something a little more Wayne-like. I'm not a fan of the, of the sloped canopy. I don't know, I guess it, to me, that, it just looks really industrial. Again, it is not, I don't think, to the aesthetics of Wayne. And it, it kind of looks like a truck stop to me a little bit. So sorry. I like Wawa. I don't mean to disparage, but I guess it's a little different when you want to see it in the center of our town that is, you know, has such a, a history and has such a, you know, a rich tradition and, and something we want to try to preserve. I'm concerned around, you know, I'm not, so this is certainly not my area of expertise, but I see for stormwater, you're addressing a two-year event, which I'm sure is, is what we're, they're required to do. Kevin, am I right? Or somebody? Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. Given the flooding issues that happen over there, is there something more that could be done? I know, I think Steve mentioned something. I don't, you know, we've got projects, Luke, you've got some projects over there, you know, what more, is there something more that can be done to hopefully, to look at the, the situation that's over there beyond just that site? You know, what could we do to, to possibly tie in and, and make some, make a difference in what else is happening in that immediate area? Cause I mean, just that intersection alone, you know, when we get a bad storm there, it, it's, it's pretty devastating, the flooding over there. I know, I was, so as I was reading through this, I was reading, and again, this is all new to me, but looking at the soil testing and things like that, I know somebody had brought up, I think in one of our prior meetings, about, you know, what does it look like with remediation over there? There are tanks that are there already. Are those tanks coming out? And I can't remember what, and replacing them with new tanks. I can't remember what was said. I'm sorry.
Entire, the entire site will be scraped.
So it's gonna be scraped?
All, all existing facilities will be removed and all 100% new.
So all the tanks are coming out?
Absolutely.
And then, so is there, then there's consideration around if there's any soil contamination or things like that?
Everything will be addressed to state standards.
Okay.
And any remediations necessary will be completed.
Okay, all right. What else did I have? So I do want to key in on what Ms. Stern said around that, that driveway. Why is the one on Aberdeen the longest, or appears to be the, the biggest driveway? Is that where you intend to bring in the trucks, the refuel, the trucks to fuel it in? No, they'll come in off of Lancaster? I mean, you got, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure that's not preferred way for you guys to do it. I'm sure you all have seen that street. You know that that's not ideal, an ideal situation. But I guess.
We should have a truck turning plan as part of the submission, and that is not the intention at all.
Okay.
I think that was brought up as part of the conversation, but that's not the intention.
Okay. I just, you know, just for the, you know, the information of the residents who've brought it up, if we could just. I'm sorry, I don't mean to rake you over the coals. My boys would kill me if they knew I was raking Wawa over the coals, because they love Wawa.
That's fine. There's multiple ways to get in and out of the site. And we actually do show that there is an ability to make that left off of Lancaster and, and into the site. But we can also make it circulate. We can also show that the truck can work throughout, throughout the site and access to and from Lancaster Avenue. So I can revise the plan to show that as well.
Okay.
Well, you didn't, you didn't show us anything right there. So what does this plan show?
Cause I. What this plan shows is it's multiple access, multiple ways that the trucks can access the site, physically access the site. The top-left corner here shows that we, that a truck could access the site off of Lancaster, or from Lancaster down through Aberdeen, make a left into the site, circulate, and then back out to Lancaster Avenue.
And that's probably the most trips on that, on that, what you just showed there, right?
I'm sorry.
That is probably the most anticipated truck route, what you just showed, or is that not the highest number?
No, no, I, I think Matt can speak to the number of trips.
Sure. So one of the things that we do when we prepare the plans is, is we are tasked with, not only with PNDOT, but with the township, is looking at what we call the truck turning templates. Can we get oversized vehicles in and out of each of the driveways? Because if you can't accommodate for an oversized vehicle, for whatever reason, then you need to make sure that that driveway is signed appropriately in that direction. So what this plan shows right now is that trucks can enter and exit these driveways and circulate around the site without negatively affecting the internal operations or the external roadway. In other words, entering or exiting in opposing directions of traffic. The reason why we have a 30-foot driveway in Aberdeen, and it's almost similar on the right in, right out on Lancaster, is the fact that when we design these sites and we look at these sites, we're not trying to minimize the internal drive aisles. We are trying to maximize or provide for what we call oversized drive aisles to allow people, because there is a lot of activity on site, allow people the ability to circulate through the site and not feel like they're constrained. There is a lot of stuff going on between the pumps and the building. So we prefer 30-foot drive aisles, and when we have the opportunity to provide them, we do. As you move from Aberdeen east on the site, based on the drive aisles that we need, not only for the truck circulation, but in between the buildings and whatnot, we're, we're somewhat left with a 27, I believe it's 27-foot drive aisle to the rear. That's really, at the end of the day, because of that and the setbacks and the parking, it's really the only reason why it's 27 feet and it's not 30 feet. Like the driveway, yes, 27 feet, while it's not 30 feet, like it's on Aberdeen. If the 30-foot seems to be an issue, we can look at reducing it by a couple feet. But obviously, we want to give that width, the ability for vehicles to enter and exit and feel like they're doing so without feeling constrained. Now, as far as the delivery trucks are concerned, there's, there's literally two types of the oversized, the wheelbase 50 trucks that enter and exit the site. One is for the store, which would load along the front of the building here, and the other one is the tanker truck. Both of those deliveries are controlled by Wawa. So if Wawa tells the delivery driver that they are to utilize a certain access point to enter and exit the facility, they will do so. The fuel trucks come on an as-needed basis. It's computerized, so when the fuel levels and the underground storage tanks get to a certain level, it automatically triggers a delivery to be made. However, the, the store itself, when it gets the WB50 that, that delivers to the store, that, that occurs about once a week. So it's not that it gets a, it's a truck to the store coming every day and offloading product. Obviously, you'll get the Coke trucks, you'll get the Tasty Cake trucks and things of that nature. But as far as the largest vehicles that'll be entering the site, it'll be the fueling truck, and it'll be the larger delivery truck that'll enter. But those are controlled by Wawa. And obviously, we've heard very loud and clear tonight that the residents in the township do not want to see tractor trailers or larger trucks on Aberdeen Avenue, and will work to make sure that that does not occur.
Can you go back to the drawing right there? Which one of those is the most, gonna be the most used?
There, there.
You don't know?
There, there was no answer to that question. It's not that there's the most used. These are shown to show that trucks can circulate the site in various options. This is not option preferred A, this is not preferred B, and this is not preferred C. This is the various options that can occur on site to show, to depict that these trucks can circulate on the site and do so without affecting the parking spaces. Because one of the things, and, and Ms. Kaminski can, can agree with me on this, hopefully, is that if we showed a truck turning template, and it was showing that trucks were circulating around the one side of the building, and it was clipping a bunch of parking stalls, one of the first comments would be, that can't happen. You have to revise the internal circulation to make sure that that truck can circulate the site freely. And that's what we would try to show in these various options. It's not, this is preferred over this, or this is preferred over that. It's, we can accommodate the deliveries.
It's not preferred, expected, is what I meant.
We, we require.
Well, it's not that it's expected, it's, it's, it could happen.
We, if I could just fill in, we make them show us truck turning templates for every conceivable movement that can occur into the site and out of the site. And we check to make sure that they're not crossing over the WL lines, or encroaching on opposing traffic areas, or running over the curb, or hitting parking areas. So the idea is, and that's why you'll see truck turning templates, and then we'll say, you still need to provide six more movements. Here's what they are, because we are trying to make sure that you don't get into impinging or creating a problem on site. Doesn't mean that they're going to do those movements, but we still need to make sure that the site can handle them in case they do occur.
So you can, as Wawa, you can tell your trucks, you know, you guys need to use the Lancaster, you need to use this driveway on Lancaster, that's your, your entrance and exit from the site. You're not to go into the neighborhood, you're not to cut around and come down Midland and shoot up Aberdeen, even like the Tasty Cake trucks and the Coke trucks and all that. You guys can control that and have the deliveries come to that certain point, so that the neighbors don't have to have, you know, truck traffic driving through as they try to come around and get on through Aberdeen.
So I'm just the boring traffic engineer. I'm just speaking from experience on the other projects I've worked on. I'm sure that as we move forward, as we progress through this process, that the applicant and Wawa would be more than willing to work with the township to figure out what is the best, not only for the deliveries, but for, obviously, the township and the residents.
Great, thanks. I think that's it. So I did, so Mike, I had a question about the back door, because I think the one up at Banbury, don't they close the back door at a certain time? Like, you can only use the front door, I think, after a certain time?
10:00 PM, 10:00 PM.
10, yes, 10. So my thought was that that back door wouldn't be open, but I think we had another resident who said, you were kind of like, eh, it would be fine if it was open. So there was access for either side. You know, I don't, I don't know how other people might feel to me, and I don't know how our police also feel about that. I mean, one of the things that I'm, have a concern about is certainly the, you know, potential loitering. Like I said, I've got two boys, you know, the kids, they hang out at Wawa. You know, it, it, what, you know, if there's only one. You know, it, it, what, you know, if there's only one point of access for them, is that easier to control for, you know? I'm not saying there's going to be bad things happening there, but, you know, is it, is it just a, you know, a safety issue? If there's only one door that's open, one place for, you know, the police to see where kids are and things like that? So I guess that was my only other question, and definitely, it is my hope that we, as we move forward in this process, that there can be some serious consideration around the aesthetics and that we can work on that moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay. First of all, for all of the people in the public, the procedural status of this project is it has not been reviewed by the planning commission. It has not been reviewed by the Board of Commissioners. It's only been reviewed for the second time by this subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners. They still need to go to Planning Commission, and we said that it was in November, so maybe December would be the earliest it would come before the planning, before the Board of Commissioners for approval. So there's three more months, and there's been nothing approved to date. That being said, I hear the concerns people have in the public, which is, "You guys already have this all worked out. We don't have a chance." I would encourage everyone to not take that stance, and that's not the case. It's not a, it's not a done deal. There is the opportunity for the community to have an impact to the extent that they want on this project. First of all, my, would issues relate to the, you just talked about the trucks on-site. I think the question raised earlier was, "It seems like you're planning for trucks to come in off of Aberdeen." I haven't heard anything that would refute that to this point. And I think it's a legitimate concern. My experience in my neighborhood with trucks is you can only have very limited impact on where truckers go. You can get the fuel drop truck for Wawa. I think that you will be able to control them where they come in. Other deliveries, it's less likely, and certainly, the trucks that are coming in that are using Wawa as customers, you will have no control over where they go. All of them will be putting additional stress on the streets and traffic as they seek the path of least resistance to the location. The community is very, very adept and understands the human nature of this. And where I live, on Bellrose Lane by Glen Mary, we see many, many trucks coming on King of Pressure Road and the deliveries to 333 Bellrose and others. They take the back roads, they take the neighborhoods, because these are truck drivers. These guys are trying to get from place to place as efficiently as they can. They're not always the regular guys. There are also a lot of independents. They will drive anywhere. And we have signs all over, we talk to the retailers, we talk to the companies, and we, they talk to their trucking partners. There's still very limited impact that we have on where these truckers go. So I don't believe you that we can control the trucks, because certainly, you can't control the customers. As far as how many trucks are coming in with 100,000 gallons or 70,000 or 80,000 gallons of storage you have at the site, I think you'll be seeing a fuel drop just about every day. So I think that you'll be seeing one or more fuel trucks, 50-foot wheelbase, coming in to fill up one of these tanks at Wawa every day. Now, I don't think we've gotten the volumes yet. You guys will develop that and send that to us, and we'll see what the volumes are. But there's going to be, they're going, you're going to sell a lot of gas. There's going to be a lot of delivery trucks that will be coming through. So I think it's very important that we understand what do we anticipate as the typical truck and what route are they taking? Which one of those circulation routes are they going to take? And what you're saying is, "Well, we don't, we don't know, we're just showing it can happen." I would like to see Wawa develop and let us know, "This is what we anticipate. This is what we will direct our suppliers to take." And we need to work through that and understand exactly where it is because we want to keep those people off the streets. As far as the aesthetic, I, as a corporate person, know how the corporate businesses work. Wawa has a trademark, they have a look, that's what they go with. And anybody who's reasonable has got to say, "This is going to look better than what it does today," because it is, it's just going to look better. I, I recognize it'll be difficult for corporate to approve any kind of a massive change on a standard Wawa. For instance, if we said, "We want Manfred roofs," or if we want, if we want to have a antique style, we'd be difficult. But you hear the people, that's the kind of thing that they're going to want to, to talk about. And to me, I'm not as concerned about that. So here's a point from me. The aesthetics, I think it's clear, will be better than what we have today, as you've shown it right there. However, obviously, you're not getting it for a lot of people. As far as the traffic study here, so I'm glad you're still standing. One of the points raised by the constituents is an excellent point. Typically, we do traffic studies for morning, AM rush and PM. For Wawa, you have an AM rush and use of Wawa that is at the very beginning or before the typical peak hours that you'd be doing traffic studies for. Similarly, Wawa has a peak that doesn't coincide with the PM, because you have that lunch peak. And those issues are of concern to the constituents because we're measuring AM and PM peak and talking about average daily volumes, but this is going to, there's going to be a sub-peak that is off of, off of the standard peaks that you're measuring. So that is something that people, I think, is a legitimate concern. Comment?
Sure. And if I may, just, I just want to go back to the, to the delivery trucks, just real quick to make it clear. As I mentioned, as we move forward, we, as a group, will work with the township to determine the appropriate location for deliveries. We've heard loud and clear Aberdeen is not preferred. As we had mentioned again, this is just to show that trucks can circulate to site and enter and exit from different directions. But I do, I am confused, just so we can get this clear as we move forward, I just want to ask a question. Are there delivery trucks, fuel trucks, currently traveling through the residential neighborhoods that serve these two gas stations? Is that a problem today?
I, I don't think it is. The concern would be that a fuel delivery truck and any other delivery truck with a long wheelbase would, instead of coming down Lancaster and turning into the Wawa, it would go through one of the side streets east and cut through those neighborhoods to turn in to make the right to do the livery off of Aberdeen. And, and that is what you will have some difficulty, some truckers will do that.
I guess my question is, do they do it today, because they have six access points?
They, they might, but we're going to add more trucks and more deliveries and more business from this business than currently is happening today. If your point is, "It's already happening today, we're not..." If it is happening today, then my guess is it will be happening even more with this development.
Okay. And it wasn't my point, it was more of a clarification to make sure that there aren't trucks currently going down Midland to service the two gas stations, because there are two. And they would have two different delivery tanker trucks, and they would have two other delivery trucks that come through the day, UPS, soda truck, whatever parts to the, to the office. I was just trying to clarify, as we move forward, to try to, to make sure...
Listen, I can tell you, that's my neighborhood, I can tell you, and I think my neighbors, everybody's shaking their heads to say the same thing I am, that we, we don't really have a problem with that.
Okay, okay, excellent.
Probably, we don't today. However, conditions will be vastly different with this.
Sure.
It will be a completely different issue, and you will get, even if you, even, again, the fuel trucks, I think you will be able to designate, and they will comply with the direction. But many, many others and the customers will seek these other routes through the neighborhoods to get there. And it will happen, it's just a matter of how often. And it will happen more than it happens today.
Commissioner, what if we, and I don't mean to throw a loop through our traffic, to their traffic engineer, what if the Aberdeen was right-turn only out?
That's what they're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see.
So, but I mean, you're going to cause more traffic at the light, but...
But I, I'm concerned about the right turn in from Midland to Aberdeen into the store, into the store.
No, but I'm saying if, if the, if the, what's shown is the widest, if you could flip the plan to the Aberdeen? So we were just playing with her.
Yeah, that's what, we said, we said that's what we'll do.
You're going to go right only.
Right only, right. Unless, there's, what about the people who live, who want, who want to get gas and want to make that left?
So they have to go, they have to go to the signal and make a right and go on the right end?
Yeah, they probably, they'll probably just sneak the left, but whatever. Alright, my next...
But anybody in, in very close proximity to there will probably be walking. I mean, I'd imagine that many people who live right there are driving.
But they're going to get gas.
Well, I guess.
You know, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to be like, "I'm going to make the left." Alright, I mean, that's going to be minor.
Just to answer your question about the traffic study?
Yeah.
So as Ms. Kaminski had mentioned, a traffic study is not meant to look at the worst of the worst. It's to look at a sample of the peaks. This type of use is heavily reliant on the amount of traffic that's on the roadway. It's what we call a pass-by destination, or that's actually, you can't say pass-by. It's a pass-by type use. It relies a lot on the traffic on the roadway. 76% of the traffic that'll enter and exit this facility is already on the road today. And that's proven, that's, that's been studied, and that's, those are the numbers that are utilized. So what we try to do, because it's so...
Let's just talk about that, 76%, but my guess is you don't get, the current Sunoco and BP, you're not at 76%.
Oh.
It's a lower number.
Sure, sure, absolutely. And the traffic study is going to spell that out.
Okay.
And I'm just talking about the peaks. The AM peak hour for this type of use is the heaviest, is the highest peak hour that they've found for this type of use, convenience store with gas.
What time?
The AM peak hour falls between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, it's the one highest hour. So traffic on Lancaster Avenue during that time, 6:30 to 9:00, 7 o'clock to 8:30, whatever it may be, during that time is also very heavy, the commuter traffic, the people going to and from school, dropping kids off, going to work, whatever it may be. Similarly, in the afternoon, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM is the peak hour of this type of use, as well as the peak hour of traffic on the roadway. And what you will find is the amount of traffic on Lancaster Avenue during an AM peak hour or the PM peak hour is far, it far exceeds the amount of traffic on the roadway during the lunchtime peak hour. So when we do a traffic study, we want to look at the worst case, or not the worst case, but the highest hours of traffic on a typical weekday and show that the impact of the site is X, and what we need to do to mitigate the impact of the site.
I'm, I'm, I've been doing this for some time, I'm aware.
Okay, so that's why we look at the peak hours. Looking at a lunchtime hour, while there may be a heavier use of the Wawa at lunchtime hour, it's not a heavier use on Lancaster Avenue.
Okay. This is the argument with traffic engineers that we always have. One of my constituents said to me, "If we, if, will you listen to every traffic engineer for every project? We wouldn't have any traffic on the road, because everyone comes in and says, 'We're no new traffic.'" But we know that's not the case. Here's, there's the point. I understand what you're saying. The peak hour for Sunoco, I mean, for, the peak hour for Wawa, there is a mini-peak at the very beginning of your 7 to 9, and there's a peak there. There's, the, the, the service guys and others are in Wawa from 6 until 7. They have to start at 7:30. There's a mini-peak there. There's also, and it's a destination, it's not pass-by traffic for a lot of Wawa. It is, there's, it's a destination location. Same thing at lunchtime, it is a destination, there is another mini-peak. So, agreed. Likely, we'll have the standard peak hour somewhere around 8 to 9, and then somewhere 5 to 6. But in this particular use, you will have yet another peak. The constituents are saying, "Listen, I know lunch is going to be a peak. I know early in the morning's a peak." And in addition to that, you just talked about the other ones, the kids coming out. Traffic is going to be a major issue here, but the constituents, again, are saying, "What about these other peaks?" Because they will be there, and it is a destination. That's, that's my only point with that. When we do, when we, we do these traffic studies, you guys get so focused on peak hour, and that's all it is. The people know, it's, they live there 24 hours a day. When they are driving, their kids, they're coming home from school, they're going to lunch, they're going out at night. They know where they hit the traffic is not just the peak time that bothers them, it's all through the day. Okay? So we should, and especially in this application, we got to take a look at that. Now, the other entrance, you're showing, so people talk about this right-in, right-out entrance. That's fine, I guess it'll work. It's, it's great if you're going east. But as we said, if you're going westbound on Lancaster, you're going to have to get everyone into that first entrance, right? And again, you're going to have people missing that. So that first entrance, I understand it, it, that is all directions. That's right in, right out, left in, that, that first entrance, and that's going to be your, that's going to be your main entrance then. Especially if we limit you on that Aberdeen, I mean, that really is your main one. And that one should be the widest one, right? So I recognize the site constraints building, it gives you 27 feet, but you see, you're scaring people when you have the wide one on Aberdeen. That's what you're doing, you're, you're making people's back get up. So I would, I would rethink that. Landscape maintenance, you have a big buffer behind the building there between the houses, but you have the fence, you moved the fence. What is going to be the controls to make sure that landscaping stays alive and is, and healthy? You guys are going to, there's a gate in that, or how are you going to do it?
Remember, Rich, there's a maintenance agreement that we signed with the township regarding stormwater management, buffering, and all that.
So how are they going, where's the gate? What, who's going to be going, and what's the timing? Do you have any sense of that at this point?
No.
Okay.
Something we'll, you know, address.
Alright. On the stormwater, you said 2,000 cubic feet of storage is required. You're going to be closer to 3,000 in that drainage area with stone and arched capacity. What, what's the perk data? Is it, does it perk there? You, you talked about you're going to have a, a slow dispersion of the water, but do we have percolation data? Well, I mean, alright, here's the thing, because Nick, I said it right there. Nick, you said, "We're going to comply with all stormwater." So what I heard you saying is, "Rich, we're not going to have a waiver for stormwater. We're going to be, we're going to, we're going to infiltrate everything you want us to." And if you don't, then I'm going to say, "You said you were going to, Nick."
Mr. Booker, if I can, if I can address that quickly. If you, if you notice in my review letter, we call this site a stormwater hotspot, right? So what that means is we do not want them to infiltrate there, because it is a stormwater hotspot. We don't want contaminants infiltrated. Alright, so there will be no infiltration on this site.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to me. What I would say is, make sure that you're, you clean, so you minimize the TPH that's infiltrating. I, I think, you know, if you don't infiltrate, then that means you're going to be pumping it, you know, into the creeks and streams, over, however you get it out, you know? I thought the whole point of this... You're doing, you're catching it, you're going to just keep it, you're going to keep it there and just disperse it slowly.
And Steve, and Steve already told them that he wants to see them go above and beyond.
Yeah. I just, you know, okay. I mean, the whole point of, the whole point of the stormwater is to infiltrate the water. And when you say, "We're going to do stormwater," what you're doing is you're going to do detention. That's what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's, he's making a point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I hear you, that, well, we, this could... My view is, with gas stations today, there's not a lot of oil that gets into the stormwater. It used to be, right, in the 50s, 60s, there was oil all over the place, it was always in the stormwater. With your Stage 1, Stage 2, the, everyone, those, those tanks are so tight, people spill very little with the Stage 2. There's hardly ever any, and, and anything they spill is under the canopy. There's not a ton of oil that gets into the stormwater. I think, would you agree with that, don't you think? Okay, alright.
You almost sound like a Sunoco guy.
Alright.
Do you work for Sunoco?
I can tell you, I, I've been, you know, I've known this business for a long time. So it's not a huge thing. To me, I guess you don't want to perk, because that gets in the groundwater, which is a problem in that area anyway, but if, if you're just, if you're just attaining it, I, I'm not really sold on the great stormwater benefit from this project anymore then. really sold on the great stormwater benefit from this project anymore then. So it doesn't perk, and it will never perk. Got it, thank you. Wayne Business Overlay District, this is right next to the WBOD, Wayne Business Overlay District. And we have people that like, we want to have this gateway, it was mentioned, right? That's part of the comprehensive plan, and Matt Marshall, I know, is a friend of mine who's very big on making, you know, the businesses in Wayne, they want to have a nice streetscape. They want trees with uplighting, and they want a consistent look from Wayne all the way down as far as Uncle Fur Park at Rosemont, if it could. So I would ask, and I think that the comments said that there's really nothing planned, we should make it as nice along the street with trees and uplighting, et cetera, banners, whatever they want, to make it consistent with the Wayne Business Overlay District. It's not that much money, I would ask that you do that. Need trees and lighten gateway perk, fence, 30-foot, left-in to get gasoline, that's a big point. The left-in for customers to get gasoline. It's the circulation, and it's just going to be the customers, right? The customers, we're really going to have a problem on Lancaster Avenue, the people are absolutely correct. You're going to really bollocks up people with that right-in, right-out. So I don't know how to get this, how to get this right, what to do with it. My view was, you need to have a way for people to get around people waiting to get in to Wawa or make a left on Aberdeen to get in, because you want to have two lanes going around them. I don't see how that's going to happen, so maybe you might want to propose, I don't know if these folks would agree with it, but that right-in, right-out, and Amy said, "Well, you know, you don't want to have people that close to the intersection going the other way." But we need, we're going to need, we need some help on that Aberdeen-Lancaster westbound movement. That's just going, that's a very tough, tough thing, and you will see the cars stack up there as they, and trucks, as they want to use this facility. That's, so that's, you're really, that's, without making Lancaster and adding another lane, this is really going to be a problem. It's great to have that right lane on Aberdeen, that's great, that's going to help, but it's really the Lancaster traffic and the lack of driving skills by the general public is really what the issue is going to be, right there. That's all I have. Thanks very much for the Wawa people, because really, as developers go, these guys, you guys do a good job and are really receptive and responsive. But still, it's, you know, there's a lot of people that really are expressing negative comments about this and really need to address it, to make sure you can get the people as comfortable as you can, because otherwise, I gotta say, I don't know what the status is, if you can, if you've got four votes or not on this at this point, so, all right.
All right, so with that, Rich, thank you, Lisa, anything further? Staff, anything further? No? All right, well, Nick, everybody from Wawa, thank you for coming out, staff, thank you for your time, and certainly, the public, thank you for your comments. I will take a motion to adjourn at this point.
I'm moved.
All right, is there a second? All right, we're adjourned.